All right. Got it. Good afternoon. This is the Wellington Board of Education Policy Committee meeting. It is June twenty fifth and we are calling the meeting to order at four oh two P M. This afternoon, we'll be doing some policy review and preparing for our upcoming meeting that will be happening next month. So we are starting with fifty one fourteen suspension expulsion student due process.
Yep. Uh, first off, sorry, I was the one that botched the link last time I used the link that was reused and um, it was no longer good, so I apologize for that. Uh, let me click share here. And that changed to the policy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hi Jen, um, give me one second, make co-host, yes. Okay, perfect. All right, so um, this is your current suspension expulsion student due process policy. I'm just gonna give you the same thing that we have done with other policies since we've a- adopted the shipment model policy. My suggestion is gonna be a complete removal of this policy uh, and the rag, to be honest with you, uh, and replace it with the update updated shipment policy. It's the di- discipline policy below. And then if you see something that doesn't uh, correspond that you wanna add back in, I would do that. Uh, but just because the the shipment policy is, we know it's up to date, we know it's got all the legal pieces in it. Uh, I would suggest you do that. I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of kinda cross-conversation, I would say, today, just across these policies because they're all aligned. Um, if you want me to go through them all and you can kinda talk about them under the shipment model policy picture, does that make sense to you? Is that okay? Yeah, okay, I see nods. So that, so my suggestion will be to take five one one four current, the policy and the reg to toss it. Uh, I would suggest then you take this restorative practice policy, which you currently don't have. I would add this in. Uh, it's short, it just talks about restorative practices, you know, how we handle bullying, challenging behavior, it's short. It aligns with the next policy, which is the shipment policy, and just trying to give you a big pi- big picture here. It aligns to the student discipline policy here. Um, which this is the model policy, uh, and this would replace your suspension policy. Um, has all the same details in it. And then in the same in the same breath, you would then also be adopting, and this is new and you have to do this. Um, this is where you don't get a choice. Um, this is the the model policy from shipment, but every school district received this in um, in March. Uh, they still don't have the forms out through shipment or the state, but Cave um, created some. You would then also adopt this climate policy. And it aligns to all of the items that are in the restorative practices, in the discipline, and all of that business, okay? Um, they're all aligned. So does that make sense so far?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just jump back to now that I've kinda have an overview of that for you. The the shipment model policy for student discipline. It does have lots of the procedural information which you need in it. Um, but this is intended to address the the major disciplinary issues um, that could result in suspension or expulsion. It's not gonna get into the nitty gritty of some of the things that you're you're gonna see that would be in student handbooks. Um, and it's related to PBIS, the positive behaviors and then interventions and supports, the PBIS. Um, the things that are in the handbooks are um, that'll, you'll typically like the center school one, it has the outline of all the expectations. You see them hanging in the hallways. Um, they took time to develop those and then they basically have things based off of that. So that's what's in the student handbook. Um, that, those are the smaller things, they're not necessarily tied to uh, suspension or expulsion. Um, but smaller things could build up to some sort of disciplinary action, okay? The student handbooks uh, need to be updated again uh, this summer. Uh, it's on my list of things to do with admin. They have several things in there that are already outdated, the bullying thing being one of them, because there's, if you do this new policy. Um, but there's a conduct, conduct session, section in the handbooks. There's bullying, there's bus bus conduct, there's cyberbullying. Um, there's cafeteria expectations, there's out of school conduct. Uh, there's a whole bunch of different sections. They really, even though it's it's meant to be alphabetical, they probably ought to be aligned um, and brought together, so it's all in one spot, so people don't have to jump all over to see different spots. The other part of this is the staff handbook. Um, and that that also needs some updating. Um, and that's your next layer of policy that um, you could reference in your board policy. And that staff handbook policy, it is really like, it's got the bullying and harassment section, that has to be updated now because of the changes in the law. It has the school expectations again, there's a section on referrals, it needs to be updated about um, what's there and how to, you know, do a referral, like they have the link to complete a referral. Um, and then there's a list of potential interventions. All of the referrals, whether it's center or hall, they go through a Google form. Um, and they do the same thing at hall, but the hall one gets entered into Swiss, into the Swiss information. We're actually looking to see if we can do the same thing at center. And the reason why is the things that get entered into Swiss are things that you would then um, really become disciplinary records. Um, and so the question is like, if you have, you've heard me say this before, the three minors that can result in a major, which is the PBIS system, those typically are things that would become a referral. You could have a major right away, um, but those three minors are things like, I'm doing the same thing um, that are minor in lots of locations and it could become a major into a referral. So the things that are in um, the data for the Google form are things, there's a timestamp of when it's entered on the Google form. It's got the student's name, their grade, the time of the infraction, the date and location of the infraction, the name of the staff member writing the referral. Uh, it has their email address, which I think is kinda weird, to be honest with you, but I think it's automatically collected. Um, the potential antecedents, why they think this happened. Um, what the problem behavior was, along with the the uh, perceived motivation, the name of the other individuals involved, and that stays within, for the principal and the um, uh, social worker she's dealing with it. And then if there's any action taken, and that's the part that's by the staff member. Um, and that's because if it's a minor and it's like a redirection, something like that, there's just tracking for that. Um, and then there's a spot for additional comments, if they wanna write additional things in there, because it's a form, it's it's scripted. And then there's a section that is um, the principal intervention is needed, question mark, and it says yes or no. Um, if it means no, that means it's teacher handled, it's would be considered minor, yes would be, it's a major. And then the addition, additional piece would be the consequence provided by the administrator, if a parent was contacted. Um, and it, the legal part of it is there's, if there's an act of verified bullying, that's something that's new for the law. So those are the things that are on the referral. Um, a principal can take a referral. Uh, if I wrote it as a teacher, uh, and then the principal investigates more information, because there's, it's considered to be principal intervention, they can adjust the things that are in there based upon their inter- their their investigation. Um, and that would then be what what's on the referral, so they can change those things. So when you think about your board policy in your big picture, you're really looking at um, having some sort of restorative language statement. What your, what would be this policy? You would be looking at what is, falls under student discipline. Um, all the weapons things. I'm just gonna scroll through, if there's uh, you know, the the scope of it, the conduct on school grounds, if it's on school transportation. Um, I think you had a chance to look at this, I'm just scrolling through fast. They have the cannabis piece in here now, which uh, did not use to be in here. Um, discretionary mandatory expulsions, this is just straight law. Removal, if we're gonna, if students can be removed from class unless it's uh, dictated by an I E P. Um, it goes through the whole process, and you can see like, this piece is really meant to be the heavier duty expulsion, out of school suspension or in-school suspension. There's not as many reasons you can out of school suspend these days, all right? The other part of that is, this is what I'll I'll call kinda the the process to make sure that you have good climate around your discipline. Um, that's what this would would be. Questions so far, I take you off. Oh, do you wanna see the forums real quick before I, from Cave, did I share those with you or no?
I don't think so, I'm curious.
For what?
So um, the state was supposed to provide um, the Connecticut School Climate Policy that is new, that's coming out, that's replacing all the bullying information. There's supposed to be forums with it. Um, nothing was created by C S T E yet that we have, that's been
Oh, yeah, I I remember reading about that.
Yeah, and so this, this is the Caves policy, climate, school climate policy, their model, they're very similar. Um, but I'm gonna sorry to making you dizzy here. When you get down to, this is, they actually did the challenging behavior reporting form. So this could be a form that you could put in, you have to, it it could be in your regs. Um, I just suggest that if you don't like this one, you could, we should create something and put something in. Um, but it goes through what you have to have, what the, it happens on the investigation side. It just, it's process, right? Just like you had bullying forums in the past, these would be the new forums. Um, and they just don't have those forms when you go into the the um, shipment policy. They end, they just end at the policy, there's, they're not in there. So let me pause for a second. I just threw a lot at you. Questions, comments about, you wanna just go right through, the first piece I did was the restorative. Any questions about the restorative policy portion?
Are we gonna have a chance to look at those forms again?
Yeah, I I thought I shared the cave policy with you, did I not?
I could be missing.
I didn't see it, but.
Okay, I can, I can definitely share those with you. And those are, um, you could put them in the reg or you could put them in the policy, either one.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have questions on the restorative one.
Brianna or Arthur? Questions on the restorative piece?
No.
I'm gonna wait.
Okay. Um, so the second part is the model policy for, from shipment, the fifty-one pager, that I'm suggesting you use this one and replace your five one one four.
I'm trying to find my highlights.
I'm gonna be honest, being fifty-four pages, it was long, I didn't get a chance to go through all of it with as fine a tooth of comb as I would have liked to.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily opposed to moving it to board read, because it still gives me an extra month. I can bring anything up after that, but I just wanted to note that, because it is, that is quite a large, large policy.
It is, it is. And a lot of it, to be honest with you, when we get very specific things like um, just a silly example, so like a pocket knife, if someone has a pocket knife, blade length matters, and you just go back to to law. Um, and sometimes you're mandated expulsion and some name, sometimes you're not, it just depends on those things. That's really what you're looking at in this policy, I mean, the the things that they talk about, like martial arts weapons and, you know, um, um, you know, like knives that have springs, you know, but police batons, things like that, they talk about a variety of things. Um, this really is, is big picture, serious, serious stuff. It is not on the nitty gritty day-to-day. Typically, what we, like, when I give you referrals in in the monthly report, the things that you're, you're not seeing these things in there. You may see something that was tied to a bullying investigation, but you know, throwing a pencil across the room is not tied to this particular policy.
Right.
This is the bigger picture. But again, I just wanna make sure you guys understand, I see these all as very much tied together. The restorative with the student discipline um, for the shipment and the um, the climate portion, which is the bullying.
So when we present these or adopt these as policies, there will be a like a clear flow of almost like severity, because clearly, we don't have the things, as you just said, the, of the severity in nature that are outlined in these policies. But the Swiss data is something that is, you know, discussed a lot, and
Yeah.
um, I I just wanna make sure that I understand how that lower level severity kind of stuff escalates and then is reported, and when parents are included and all of that stuff, I just, like, that, that hierarchy to me is, is crucial, I feel like.
Yeah, yep. So one thing you could do, um, and it doesn't, we could do it through a reg. Um, is we could create, and this, this gets back to what's in the staff handbook and what's in the student handbook. Um, the things that uh, you've been hearing about either through the reports or through parent or feedback um, are really the day-to-day operations and what goes into a referral. And the procedural stuff that you're talking about, Jen, is that, that's what we're talking about. That's not gonna fall in your dis- student discipline policy, but in the reg, we could spell out those day-to-day, what goes into Swiss, what doesn't. Um, right now, it's just that it's in your handbook and you don't approve it, it's just, should, there should be some consistency between um, policy, and there is, there's, it's, but again, it's tied to the bigger things, it doesn't lay out all of those things that um, for parents and for families and for kids, to be honest, of process. I, uh, a couple years ago, we had purchased the Cave Model Student Handbook. Um, one, because we were missing stuff from the, a legal perspective, uh, and I didn't like that. Uh, and they adopted, Mary Kay and Lisa adopted a lot of the just straight Cave Model Student Handbook stuff. And some of those, that's, that was the problem, when they did that, they lost some of that communication piece. Like, when is their expectation for a parent to receive a communication, right? Uh, what's the timeframe? That stuff used to be there, I'm not sure if it's there now. Um, and if it is, it's, it's scattered, it might not be in a clean section where you would think it would be. Uh, and I can give you an example, it's, let me just see if I can pull this up fast. Like, this is, this is the um, this is this handbook for for CES, okay? And so this discipline section here, because it's in heading alphabetical order, goes from di- and discipline talks about detention, expulsion. Um, this, all of this is tied to current law and policy, right? Suspension, and that's it. There's other sections in here, though, if I kept scrolling, right? What about cell phones? That needs to be updated. Um, I'm just trying to see if there's another one right here. Harassment statement, like, all of that, to me, would fall under that discipline, it doesn't have to be its own section. Um, to me, like hate crimes, again, it's just, you see that in the in the table of contents here, like, you could just scroll through, sorry for making you dizzy here, but you could just scroll through and go that's discipline, that could be discipline, you know what I mean? That's where I'm su- uh, I think where this needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I'm not sure alphabetical is the best way to uh, to do it.
I think it is for the rest of it. Where they make, but the things that need, that makes sense, like, out of school misconduct is in its own section. Well, that's talking about discipline, it should be put together, and that's just what, how Cave has it in their he- their model handbook. Um, not a big fan of that. So that's where I think um, you know, I could pull the stuff out of the handbook. Um, you, you don't have to get the regs uh, um, approved by the, by the full board. You have full policy to get approved by the full board. You, I could work on regs with you to make sure that the things that you've heard around communication, or who can enter a referral, or the timeframe for entering a referral, all of those things, we could easily put into a reg. And then that's what would be held upheld for um, staff members entering things. Um, and the connection to PBIS. Uh, the connection to what goes into a discipline record and what's not, all of those things.
Yeah, but how do you have a regulation without a policy to base it on? That's where I'm struggling.
What do you mean?
So every regulation should revolve, should pull from, from a policy. And the regulation is simply how the administration moves forward with enforcing those policies.
Correct.
How do you have a regulation on on these things, on referrals and stuff like that, without having overarching policy that outlines it for everybody else?
Well, it is, you, your policies, there's disciplinary action. And then the next level down is the the handbook, that's your next level down, it doesn't have to be a, which I think is typical. It's, you can, you don't, you don't have a policy for everything under the sun, but you could put something in the student handbook that is an expectation.
Hmm, that's where I think we disagree, because we do have a policy for everything under the sun, it's just whether or not it makes it into the handbook, or it becomes its own reg. The idea is that, that binder is the thing that governs everything. And how it gets disseminated down to regulations and then in like a summary form to the handbook, that's how we go from there, but everything should go back to the main section of policies to pull all the information from there. And if we adopt this, the shipment one with the, with all the, basically the major disciplinary things, how does that govern minor things? But I, and I understand, you're, you're saying it gets governed by the reg and it gets governed by the handbook, but if there's nothing to pull from for, for something like that, I think we should have something in there, even if it's its own, its its own section, you know, fifty-four hundred or fifty-four oh one or something like that, fifty-four oh one B or, you know, whatever you want, whatever you wanna name it, but something specific for the schools that outlines, okay, here's, you know, here's what happens, here's the three minors to a major, here's, here's how the referral sheet looks, here's what gets recorded. Um, you know, things like that, I don't, I don't think you can encompass that all just in a reg, I think that needs to be its own thing. And then you, you build the regulation and you build, and then you go down even more than the handbook.
What would the reg, what isn't, if that's not how you're gonna implement it, and which is what the regulation is, what, what, what's, what would be in the reg? I don't disagree with you, that all needs to be there.
Probably, probably the definitions of the infractions, that'd probably be one of the bigger things, like, you wouldn't necessarily have to put all the infractions in the policy, but you could outline the general idea of what they are in the reg, so the teachers, the administrators, everyone knows what they're looking for. Um, and they're categorized properly. You might want to, you might wanna set more strict parameters around who can create a referral and not necessarily put, you could have the referral and what's contained in it in the policy, but not necessarily who can do it when it's appropriate for the people to do it, and the appropriate timing in which to do it, tho- those could be part of regulations, those don't necessarily have to be in the policy. Um, I just think that there's, I just think that we shouldn't leave I, I, I'm uncomfortable having a regulation that doesn't have a, a policy to refer back to.
So you don't think that those, right now, because it's majors, like expulsion, suspension, there's not a section in there to, that it can be tied to, is your point, right?
Not, not the minor things, no, like, obviously, obviously, something for the major stuff, but, but the minor stuff, there's no, there's no real uh, there's no real rules around it. You know what I mean, it's just kind of, you know, i- i- it's almost open to anybody at this point, which is not, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but I, like I said, I don't think, I I'm uncomfortable having a reg for things, and especially because we get, uh, we get reports on this every month, so it's something that's kind of important for us to be able to refer back to, back to as well. Um, just usually regs fall at the end of a policy and they have the overarching policy to go back to, to pull from. Um, so just having a reg revolving around these sorts of infractions and using the shipment policy, which is clearly tied to much more significant behaviors.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a one-to-one connection there.
So if we, if we added um, something to the shipment policy that indicates some kind of like minor, some definition of minor behaviors, and then that the kind of rubber meets the road would be the um, handbook, which outlines it even more clearly, because I I agree, I think I agree that the minor behaviors need to be addressed in the overarching policy, but I'm afraid to get too into the weeds in the policy as opposed to the handbook, because that's the thing that most people are going to see. And like, what if at some point we don't do Swiss data anymore, and we just, we track it in a different way, or something like that, like, those to me are more like operational things as opposed to policy things, like that, we can have the policy that says minor behaviors are reflected this way. Um, and for, and in the handbook, it says how we manage those operationally.
So Jen, you're, I think what I heard you say was you agree with adding something to the shipment policy, I'm, I'm not sure the what yet, we can figure that out, but just to address, and I think this is what Arthur's saying too, um, to address within the policy, not the reg, within the policy, that we operate on a system that utilizes minor infractions, give some information about it, and then spell that out further in the reg. And then there may be additional information, which quite frankly, I'd rather just write the reg and be specific enough that the schools can just use it. Um, addressing the, the minor. Is that you, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Arthur, is that what you're saying as well?
Yeah, but I don't think you can tie, I don't think you can necessarily tie these to that shipment policy, I almost think it needs to stand on its own, because they're two different levels of severity. And I don't want something, I don't want something that's gonna be a more common thing, because suspensions, expulsions aren't exactly common, but these either sorts of behavior are much more common. I don't want something like this tied to a massive policy that people are going to skip over essentially, and not, not figure that this is gonna fall into into the policy that talks about suspensions and expulsions, rather than majors and minors, which might result in a detention or something, you know? Into the policy that talks about suspensions and expulsions rather than majors and minors, which might result in a detention or something, you know? And I almost feel that creating a policy, not necessarily from scratch, but kind of from scratch. Really deals with our, our district's schools rather than. Anywhere else, you know, in, in the state, because we have, we have our system, it may be the same as some of the others, it may be a little bit different, but at least this would. Pretty much tailor it to, to our two schools.
So I'm just thinking um. Ship, the shipment policy is called uh, student discipline. Our old policy was suspension expulsion. Um, I wonder if we could do. Uh, kind of a, a, a two-parter, they're side by side, like you said, fifty one oh one, fifty one oh two type thing. Student discipline. Semi-colon, you know, or colon, uh, suspension expulsion. Fifty one oh two, student discipline. Uh, for lack of a better word at this point, other, um, minor infractions, day-to-day operations. You know, something like that, because then you could. The procedural piece for the majors is already in there. In that side of the policy. The stuff we're talking about was what's in the day-to-day operations for the minors. And that could go within the reg, and I think that's what you're saying, Arthur, tied to what we use as a policy. The second policy, which would be shorter than what's in all that massive stuff of the fifty one pages. I, I'm okay with that. I'd, I would wanna see what we could, if we, did, did you look up any, Arthur, did you find anything, anybody that had anything like it?
I haven't looked up yet, because I wasn't sure if you had anything, but I can, I can look through and see if I can find anything.
So I can also um. I, I typically like the shipment stuff better than cave, but I don't know if cave has separated out some of this stuff on the day-to-day operations. There's a lot of places that are using uh, PBIS. I can see if they are using it, what it looks like within their um. Within their board policy, if they have something that's about minors and process and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just think that, you know, obviously this is, this is an important piece that's gotten overlooked. And I think that now especially that we're receiving this information and we're, we're. Using it as a reflection of, of how our schools are performing, um, I think it's important to have. Very much important to have, you know, a policy to, to reference that regulation back to, like I said.
Yeah.
I said this a bunch of times already, I, I just don't think you can have a regulation that doesn't tie into a policy much more directly than, than these two would.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree any, I think when you're talking about minors and you're reflecting back to a policy that says suspension or expulsion.
Right.
Not, not great alignment, I, I guess is your point, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you on that. So uh, maybe I'm just thinking. Just look back at this real quick. Is the school, the Connecticut school, the climate policy is really talk, it gets into the challenging behavior of bullying. That's not necessarily where we're at either, they are separate. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't mind seeing something like this back-to-back-to-back. A fifty one oh one, you know, fifty one oh two, fifty one oh three, so they're right next to each other. Um, and just going right down the list of, you know, one's expulsion and suspension. The next level down is all the climate stuff, which is the climate cert uh, policy that you see there. And that's tied to bullying and challenging behavior. And the next layer down fifty one oh three being something that it gets back into. Just Wellington procedure, it makes it more Wellington, um, and then how we, how we implement it. I know I get phone calls from my principals. Asking sometimes about implementation and inconsistency. Uh, I think if we can lay that out, it makes. That a lot cleaner, it's not gonna be as black as, black and white as like you threw a pencil, you get a detention, it's not like that. But it would, it would lay out the process for parents and for staff members to be clear like. Hey, there's a minor and then suddenly there's a major, you can lump those together and it becomes one referral. That, that's the clarity I think that people need, that's not there right now.
I also think there should be some clarity around the form and some. Because when you have an open Google Doc, you leave yourself. Room to have, to have issues and one of the things that I was concerned to me when Ms. Kober spoke was. Um, that referrals are being done on a weekend in the evening. Um, that leaves way too much time to not remember what it had, like I think referrals. So we had this. We had a similar discussion at the high school surrounding homework and the feedback from, from teachers about homework and how it's not useful. If it's not done in a more prompt manner, um, I think this is the same thing with, with referrals, like I think that if you're going to write a referral. When it's time stamped in the document should be within, I would say, I think eight hours is generous, but I think it should be wi- within eight hours of the alleged. Behavior, I mean, that way it's still. It, it shows that it was fresh in the mind of whoever wrote it and that it's as accurate as you could be. Uh, when you're waiting two, three days. It's not exactly. I don't think, I don't, I don't think you recall everything properly a couple of days later.
I, I did um, Swiss forms a million years ago in a school that I worked with. Um, is it paper that gets put into a Google Doc or is it just typed right into the Google Doc?
Typed right into the Google Doc. So I, you know, it's the same form over and over and they enter the, that data then into Swiss, so I, I'm not sure why, um, I haven't gotten that far yet. Um, because you can, I can take, I can take the master, there's only a couple of people that see the master. Um, and so I can see the full master and I can sort it by location, I wanna see if the buses are having an issue this month. Or, you know, I can, I can sort it by what the specific infraction is. Um, sometimes things are coded, I would say inconsistently. Um, based upon the choices that are on the form, which is why the other, um, you know, what. Someone might put in his mean-spirited behavior, you do further investigation and find out more, right? Um, but. It's not a paper document, is it, it is done on a Google form. Um, so nobody then has to enter it in and the person that is, that is doing the referrals, the, the person that enters it. And that's what's, goes to the principals. For consistency, I guess. So how um. I guess uh, my question then is. You know that the, the climate policy is the uh. It's like the mandatory thing every, every district has to do, no matter what, you know, district you're in. I would say you could move that, I would say you could move this. Discipline policy forward from the shipment one to replace your suspension expulsion, but I would rename it. With the intention of how, you know, knowing that we wanna. Separate, you wanna do a separate one. Um, and then add also in the, as part of that, the restorative piece, is that what you're all thinking is to move these forward? And do the work on the additional piece that gets at the, the minors and day-to-days?
That makes sense to me.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
So um. I think what I'll do then. Just sign the brain here, give me one second. Looking to see when our first. If my first admin meeting is a couple of weeks into July. Yeah, my first admin meeting, uh, summer retreat is July tenth. And what I'm thinking is I would like to. Get some feedback from them on a draft that I can create with the thoughts that you just presented today. And if we meet soon after that, would that work for you? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about. I mean, I am and I'm not concerned about timing is because I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna rush anything and have stuff get missed, so yeah, I'm, I'm more than fine with getting, getting the feedback and taking a comprehensive look at it.
I wanna make sure, I, I, I would prefer to roll out and I know an approval process is, this is where the reg is different than the policy, okay? And the reg we can continue to work on, we just wanna make sure it's in a framework where. It, it, from my perspective. I really wanna make sure. You know, we hit the nail on the head here for September one. Um, so staff does it right. Um, it's clear to families, um, because I think that's what's missing right now.
Yes.
Um, and you know, the staff expectation knows, they, they know the expectation for communication or what's not communicated and the same thing for parents. So. I asked that question like that might be that we have, have to have a policy meeting. After the admin meeting, but soon enough that we can do enough work to make sure that we could roll something to the board. August, for the August meeting, which would then be a first read. Um, that would give us enough, because I could implement the regulation side of it, even if there's no policy yet, Arthur. It's just we're seeing that as kind of handbook material. Um, and if we wanna modify things slightly, we could in the future, but then for an approval in, in September.
Yeah, so. I, I know what you mean, um. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about. Rolling out the regulation in September if the policy is not necessarily approved but written. Um, because at least there, there is something there to base relation off of, so yeah, that, I mean, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so meeting after. July admin number one and I'm looking at um. So the next item on the agenda is the future policy review, none of these other policies to me have the, the significance of this one. Uh, in my opinion, the health and wellness might need some work just for, for future stuff for um. The school cafeteria approvals, things like that, it's tied to the wellness policy. Um, but for the most part, these other things are not on the front burner. Uh, whereas this is for me. So I would just say if we can focus just on that. I will have Brenda connect with you on a meeting following that July tenth. Admin and then we can quickly. Do some work on it, not quickly, I just say thought, I should say thoughtfully do some work on it. The other piece is that um. I think if we, whatever we do, we could also just, uh, I could put a messenger out to families and say. Hey, we're working on our updated, you know, policy and regulation around discipline, if you have any feedback. Here's the link to the video, here are the things that we're looking at, here's what's new, here's what's, you know, if we have a draft, we could, and you wanna share the draft, you could do that. Just for feedback, I don't think that would be a bad thing either.
Right, that's fine.
I love that, I think the forums, particularly if they're gonna be shared with the families, will be something. Um, they're going to want to look at. And you usually, I know you usually touch base with our, um, your superintendent group to.
Yeah.
Maybe see what's going on there, because some districts do have like a total rubric. For particular behavior things and how they um, kind of fit into majors and minors and such.
I'll see if there's also, I only have the cave forums right now, I haven't looked at other, to see if other districts have posted it. This is so new, a lot of them don't have them on the websites yet. But um, I can ask our CAPS person Fran Rubinowitz. If there's any that she knows of that are up already, that, I'm not looking for a, a rubber stamp, I want someone. I want something that's more town-based, if you know what I mean, they just use the cave forums like, that's not what I'm looking for. Something, someone, something someone has modified that we can take and go, oh, we like that modification, that makes more sense or. Um, to move forward and that.
Like a jumping off point, yeah.
Yeah, or at least a, a comparison, so we can compare two forms or three forms and go, oh, because I can always blend them together.
Yeah.
Um, the best of the best into one, but.
Sometimes doing that, you also see things that. Do not work or you can see potentially being big problems for um, like clarification between school and parents and stuff, so. That, that's a good idea.
All right, any other? We did everything. Um, and you're in agreement that we would dump fifty one, the expulsion, suspension policy?
Yeah.
And you're okay if I change the name of it, the student discipline. Suspension expulsion, that, the new policy, the shipment one.
Yeah, change it, change it to make it more specific to what it's addressing.
Yeah, so uh, it would be. I'll just pull up for you, this is just what I'm thinking. Instead of this, it would be, um, it would be something like this. Whoops, my, my fingers on the run keys. So that way, when it's listed, you can see that, and the next one would be student discipline, something else.
So that would be second.
Say that again?
Maybe that one should go after the other.
Oh my God, I was gonna say that, but I didn't know if that was too nitpicky, like maybe those, the lower level one should go first or?
Yeah.
And work their way down. I think either order is fine, I, I mean. The, I was just trying to say there's gotta be some lower order, it could be the minor piece first into the bullying or actually climate. It's not the climate one, it's, it's the restorative practices one into the minors, into the climate, which is the bullying and, and then into the expulsion.
That's what I think.
That makes more sense to me too.
All right. Arthur, you're good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I also double-checked some of the notes I jotted down at our last um, regular board meeting and I think touched on pretty much everything that um. I jotted down there and. They are gonna get handled um, going forward.
Yeah.
Put them in more specifically, those things. But the form I think is a big piece. That needs to get figured out.
Okay.
So are you gonna try to throw the health and wellness in with this next one?
Honestly, I'm gonna see how big, well, I'm gonna see what my timeframe needs to be for that.
Yeah.
But I also wanna see how big this gets as far as like what other examples I can bring in from other districts. Um, if we have one draft. Fine, you know what I mean, I can share that with you in advance, if you have four or five and we're doing a lot of blending and it's gonna be a lot of conversation. That's what I'm gonna base it on, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So I'll have Brenda reach out, you don't have to say it on recording, I don't wanna know if you're away. Um, but I'll have her reach out so that sometime after that, the week of July tenth, the following week, maybe we can uh, try and meet that week, the week of the fourteenth. And so we can just sneak in a meeting to do that.
Perfect.
Did I miss anything else on the agenda?
No.
Nope.
No, but I did wanna ask, um, Brianna, have you heard anything from the lawyer about the uh, superintendent's review that we did?
No, but I can reach out to her again.
Yeah, so my concern is this is now being stalled. Um, for no real reason. I would like to have this on the next agenda to just relook at, because we've done all the work for it. And if there's no, if there's no objection, I, I'd wanna move it forward to the board.
Okay, I'll check in with her again, um. And Phil, if you have any communication with her in the meantime, if you can just let her know that I'm reaching out.
Yep.
I'll do that right after this.
Yep. All right.
Okay. That may go for on agenda item four, which is adjournment.
All done, it is four fifty one PM.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks all, sorry again about my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Bye.
Bye.